You work here, you play here, you live here. And yet, most of what you watch on television is about somewhere other than here. Until now, we proudly present Tube Town, TV about you. Tube Town is a Ritter Communications exclusive network, featuring local sports, community events, unique and original programming from our community. Tube Town takes what's best about television, what's best about the community, and brings them together. Tube Town, only from Ritter Communications, right by you.
Commissioner Steve Barlow. Commissioner Rusty Woodton.
Here.
Commissioner Tommy Dunlop. Commissioner Arnold McIntyre. Commissioner Jeff Mason.
Here.
Commissioner Steve Ringel.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Sterling.
Here.
Commissioner John Delancey.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Glenn Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Jimbo Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Johnny Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Courtney Fee.
Here.
Commissioner Fucci Twizell.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence Snead. Commissioner Carl Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Dale Smith.
Here.
And Commissioner Jonathan Murphy.
We have a fifteen commissioners present, I'd put it that to be a quorum. I'm giving a call on Commissioner Bob Wilson to give her an invitation to be Commissioner Jimbo Atkins. Please. I bow gracious God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day, Lord, and all the blessings that come our way today. But we pause tonight to remember nine eleven, the people who lost their lives and their families in that tragedy. Lord, our thoughts and prayers continue to go out for the flood victims in Texas and Louisiana and now Florida. We ask your blessings on these folks as they return home, and we continue to ask your blessings on all the emergency personnel who have responded and helped out during these terrible situations. Now, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity that we have to assemble together here tonight to serve the citizens of Tipton County. We ask that your guiding hand will be with us in our deliberations and the votes that we take here tonight. All these things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please, towards me, in the presence of our nations and Christ, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda? Item number six on the agenda, commissioners, is the approval of, see to the election of
Betty J. Adams, Heather Biddling, Patricia Ryan, Jeanette Hathcock, Sarah L. Honeycutt, Amber Wimbley, John P. Sexton, and Martin J. Watson.
Do we even like to add a name to this? If not, do we have a motion for those individuals being elected as notaries in Tipton County?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye. Opposed, no. So on. Item number eight is the appointment to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Larry McKee on the Tipton County Emergency Communication District. Mr. McKee's been on that for a long time, many years, he's been a dedicated, devoted member on that board, he doesn't miss very many meetings at all, he's willing to give his opinion, and I think he's always had the best interest of the folks in the Emergency Communication District at heart, but for health reasons, he's decided to resign from the district board, and so the chair is recommending that we accept Mr. McKee's resignation and that we appoint Chief John Pierce to serve Mr. McKee's unexpired term, which ends in March of 2019. Do we have a motion? Motion is by Commissioner Fee, seconded by Commissioner Atkins. Is there any discussion on motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the previous meeting, item number five, I'll just skip that. Of course, seven one million. Too many there. Motion is by Commissioner Ringel, I'll bet, the second is by Commissioner Mason, I hate my throat when I do that. Do we have any discussion on motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. You got the minutes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number nine is a resolution regarding short-term financing, one point six million dollars, and I talked with the General Welfare Committee, they got that sum, but I think that's...
That's coming out, that's going to be in our business.
Item number ten is a moment of rules committee, and that's coming out of the General Welfare Committee minutes. Item number eleven is a grant, this is a grant through the Department of Justice, it's for twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and I believe it's a JAG grant. Department of Justice to enhance the enforcement activities by the Sheriff's Office in Tipton County, they'll apply through the burn grant, JAG program. The grant funding will fund uniform slash holster's crime scene processing equipment, emergency entrance equipment, and patrol officer safety equipment to be used in the day-to-day operations by the Sheriff's Department. Do we have a motion authorizing an application for the JAG grant?
So moved. Second.
Motion is by Commissioner Murphy, seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion on the motion?
Is there any match for this grant?
I don't believe there is. If not, all in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Item number twelve is a consideration of an application to the Delta Regional Authority Creative Placemaking Grant. The Delta Regional Authority is made up of counties up and down the Mississippi River, and you can apply for a grant, each community can apply, and we would need authorization to apply. The grant is to fund amenities, would be amenities around the courthouse in Covington, bicycle racks, arc aerials, hydrophobic paint projects. There's a project that's there, this came through the REIT's Smart Community Development Program. You can write messaging, well-able messages on the sidewalk, for example, but you can't see the messages until it rains. So it's one of those things that some cities are doing to kind of make it look a little bit different, something unusual, that if folks are visiting, they can, it's just another amenity. Basically, the Creative Placemaking Grant is fifteen thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars. There is a match, but we can use any kind of donations, any time that's allotted to that program, and Mr. Robinson City does a bit of that, the grant match on it is likely to be around sixty-five hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we take that out of the community development funds that are already being budgeted, so there's no appropriation needed. I just need the authority to apply for the grant.
So moved.
There a second? Motion is made by Commissioner Sterling, seconded by Commissioner Turner, that the proper officials be authorized to apply for the Delta Regional Authority Creative Placemaking Grant, fifteen thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So on. Item number thirteen and fourteen is the election of the chairman of the legislative body and the election of the chairman pro temp. We can go into, we can recess, or we can go into session, either way you all want to do.
Do you want to go into session?
All right, we have a motion, we go into regular, into special session?
I'm making a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded that we go into regular session. Motion by Commissioner Fuzzell, seconded by Commissioner Bringle, we go into special session for the election of the chairman of the county legislative body and chairman pro temp. All in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So on. All right, floor is open for nominations for chairman and chairman pro temp.
I'm gonna make Jeff Ullman, chairman of the legislative body.
Do we have, can we do a vote together?
I can, and I'm gonna nominate, I'm gonna nominate Bob Wilson for chairman pro temp.
All right.
Jeff, I'm making a motion.
Let's see, we got a second on that?
I have a second.
Motion is by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Jones. All right, Mr. Ringel?
I'm making a motion to be elected. By Mr. Mason.
The nominee for the motion, excellent, okay. Motion is by Commissioner Ringel, seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So on. Bob, you want to make a speech?
No, sir.
All right. We appreciate your confidence. Thank you. Item number fifteen is the sheriff's report. Here Chairman, if you recognize.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Beckett. Out of my handouts, and if you have any questions, you can call, we've been pretty eventful some of the things we've seen, I know that especially YouTube district down two miles of Flex has been that, and I briefed both of them a couple things there.
Yes, sir. Do you have a motion that the sheriff's report be spread on the minutes of this commission meeting?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Atkins. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Should mention, and Commissioner Atkins has given it information, so I'll thank him for that, but the Ritter Communications Tube Town channel, which is the, yes, Richard, that's the PEG channel, isn't it? Isn't that the public education?
Yes, sir.
Channel, it's channel eleven, they're gonna be running our meetings now, they're covering our meetings, and so they're gonna run the meetings on channel eleven every Wednesday night at six p.m. And they also run the meetings several other times during the month, filling in programming gaps, but we're not for sure that every Wednesday night at six p.m. they'll be running, so we're guaranteed, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Atkins, we're guaranteed four times a month.
Right.
At the very least. They're also gonna be putting the meetings on YouTube and on Facebook, so folks without Ritter Communications cable can also see the meetings either on YouTube or on Facebook on their computer, and as those times may be changed, they'll let us know about that, but that is good news for a lot of folks in the county that are in the Ritter Communications area, that you'll be able to see these meetings publicly on the TV and also be in your computer on YouTube and Facebook, so our thanks to Ritter Communications for that. And Richard here is gonna be, he drew the short straw, I guess, he's gonna be a factor over here, so we're glad to, glad to have him at this meeting.
It's a pleasure and an honor.
All right. Do we have a report from the finance committee? Deputy Baker, if you recognize.
I appreciate that. Tonight, the Finance Administration Committee met at six p.m. September eleventh, twenty seventeen. Members present were Commissioners Barlow, Fee, Jones, Mason, Smith, Snead, Sterling, and Turner. Also present was Sheriff Parker Dummely, Lieutenant John Weatherly, Captain, excuse me, Chief Beasley, and Budget Director Deputy Bailey. Chairman Smith called the meeting order and asked Mr. Snead to open the meeting in prayer. Followed in prayer, a motion was made by Commissioner Fee and seconded by Commissioner Snead, that the Finance Administration Committee, at its capacity and as the Purchasing Committee, award the bid for a self-contained breathing apparatus to Mid-South emergency equipment in the amount of five thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-two cents. Commissioners, these are grant dollars that were appropriated in the existing budget in the civil pension account line item seven nine nine, there's nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars there. This is a grant, and there's no cost in the county, the math will be made from the outside sources. That motion carried with none opposing. Next, it was a motion by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Jones, that the Finance Administration Committee approve the health care department for calendar year twenty eighteen. The state approved an overall increase, an overall average increase of six percent resulting in an average annual increase of eighty-five dollars for the employee and an average annual increase of four hundred and eighty-five dollars for Tipton County per employee. That motion carried with none opposed. Commissioners, with this in regards to one of the items on the agenda for tonight, the resolution for the one point six million dollars, a motion was made by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Barlow, that the Finance Administration Committee recommend to the full legislative body, the adoption of the resolution authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing general obligation capital outlay notes, Series two thousand seventeen, in an amount not to exceed one point six million dollars in providing for the payment of said notes. That motion carried with none opposing. Commissioners, I know the county executive approved, you all and all the committees, but the one point six million, seven hundred thousand, approximately seven hundred thousand is the TCAT, matching the TCAT grant, three hundred and fifteen thousand is for that position of breathing building, another hundred thousand or so is for the renovation, a hundred thousand or so for the renovations to the courthouse where the registrar's, registrar's office is currently, and then an additional approximation of three hundred and eighty-five thousand for grants that we, matches that we may be making on fire grants that we may get approved for in the future. So that's how the one point six million shuts out. Following that, a motion was made by Commissioner Sterling and seconded by Commissioner Snead, that the Finance Administration Committee take the sheriff's report under advisement. The motion carried with none opposed. And if you know the business, Mr. Chairman, the motion was made by Commissioner Snead and seconded by Commissioner Turner, to adjourn on August seventh p.m. That motion carried with none opposing.
Do we have to give the resolution separate?
We will. We'll approve the court, if you approve the court, then I'll read the resolution. Let me go ahead and get into the resolution, this is on the one point six million dollars, and Mr. Beckett's already told you what we're doing, and we talked about this during the budget hearings, this is how we've got to fund it. Basically, short-term debt, these are three-year capital outlay notes at one point eight percent interest. So it's excellent interest rate, it's through the TCSA loan pool, the thinking is that this would be short-term financing, we could pay it back any time, there's no penalties, but it's set up as a three-year capital outlay note, you intend to pay it off within the next twelve months, using fund balance out of the debt service fund. You all know that if you're, if you're gonna use the reserve you've got in your debt service fund, you have to create debt to use that fund, so that's what we're doing here on the one point six million dollars resolution. As I said, it's for three-year capital outlay notes, the plan is to pay it off within the next twelve months, the interest rate is one point eight percent. We're back on the report. Do you want to add any questions? Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'm making a motion, but the Finance Committee report be adopted.
There a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Woodton to adopt the Finance Report. Any discussion or any questions on that? If not, all in favor of adopting the report, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So on. Now, we're on the resolution. This is the resolution of Tipton County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing general obligation capital outlay notes, Series twenty seventeen, in an amount not to exceed a million six hundred thousand dollars in providing for the payment of said notes. And then it goes into details of what I just mentioned earlier. Is there any questions on the resolution? Do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bringle, seconded by Commissioner Mason, to adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of a million six hundred thousand dollars of general obligation capital outlay notes, Series twenty seventeen, and that the proper officials be authorized to sign said resolution. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the resolution, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, do we have a report from the General Welfare Committee? Excuse me. Let's see, General.
Mr. Chairman, I have the August minutes from the General Welfare Committee that need to be spread on the minutes, on the minutes of this meeting. I can read them if the permission is...
You don't, that's, if you want to listen to them again, you read them, I think, last month.
I think, I think I did. Okay, General Welfare Committee, we're in regular session, the night of the justice complex at six o'clock. Members present are Commissioners Woodton, Ringel, Delancey, Wilson, Atkins, Twizell, Knight, and Murphy, with Commissioner Tommy Dunlop being absent, also President County Executive Joe Ullman, County Planner William Beasley, County Fire Chief John Piercey, and Public Works Director Shannon Reed. On a motion by Commissioner Steve Ringel, seconded by Commissioner Carl Knight, the General Welfare Committee recommends the full legislative body passes of a resolution authorizing the purchase of the Regent's Bank Building on Court Square in Covington, Tennessee. I have passed now, I'll give that resolution to everyone. Just pretty self-explanatory. Anybody have any questions, we'll be glad for it. County Executive Nancy. I'll go ahead and make a motion that that resolution be adopted, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there a second?
Right.
All right, we're on the resolution, any discussion? Any questions? Not all in favor of adopting the resolution, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So on.
On a motion by Commissioner Harold Twizell, seconded by Commissioner James Atkins, the General Welfare Committee recommends the full legislative body that a rules committee be formed to address the bylaws of the county's commissions, and that committee be comprised of the members of the current General Welfare Committee. That motion carried with none opposed, Mr. Chairman, and I would move that that be adopted also.
Second.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Bringle, that the General Welfare Committee act as a rules committee and make recommendations back to the Tipton County Commission at next month's meeting. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So on.
No further business to come before the General Welfare Committee, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Steve Ringel, seconded by Commissioner John Delancey, without objection, the meeting adjourned at six forty-five p.m. I move adopting of the report, Mr. Chairman.
There a second?
Second.
Motion is by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Bringle, to adopt the General Welfare Committee reports, August and September. Any discussion on the motion, any questions? If not, all in favor of adopting the reports, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So on. We have a report from the Tipton County Public Works Committee. Mr. Harold Twizell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The Tipton County Public Works Committee made a regular session on Regent's six thousand and six, two thousand seventeen, that the emergency management bill was filed. Meeting was called on August, Chair Twizell. Members present were Commissioners Ringel, Woodton, Knight, Delancey, Wilson, Atkins, Murphy, and Tommy Dunlop. Director Shannon Reed and Floyd Darlene Hutter, and Gary Jackson were also present. The meeting was opened in prayer by Commissioner Delancey. Motion made by Commissioner Ringel and seconded by Commissioner Murphy to approve the minutes for the month of August. Motion carried with none opposed. A motion made by Commissioner Wilson and seconded by Commissioner Atkins to approve the bill that is reviewed for the month of August. Motion passed, none opposed. A motion made by Commissioner Dunlop, seconded by Commissioner Knight, to award the bid to Hank Cook for the roll-off truck at the landfill in the amount of one hundred forty-five thousand six hundred sixteen dollars. Motion passed, none opposed. A motion made by Commissioner Murphy and seconded by Commissioner Dunlop to adjourn. Motion passed, none opposed, and meeting adjourned at six thirty at p.m. I make a motion that the Tipton County Public Works report be adopted, Mr. Chairman.
There a second today?
Second.
Motion is made by Commissioner Fuzzell, seconded by Commissioner Murphy, to adopt the Tipton County Public Works Committee report. Are there any questions, any discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the report, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're glad to have Shannon Reed with us here tonight, he had a few help, he had a little bump in the road there in his health wise, but he's, he's lost a little weight, looks good out there, his jaw's swollen up a little bit, I think, but other than that, I think he's all right. Mr. Reed, we're glad to have you back with us. Let me just share with you some of these, and I'd like this one spread on the minutes of the commission, if it's a pleasure to the court. This was a letter from the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, the Director Patrick T. on behalf of the State of Tennessee, the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, and in accordance with TCA fifty-eight dash two dash one oh six, he gives me great pleasure to inform you, we've reviewed and approved the basic emergency operations plan for Tipton County. This plan signifies the dedication to emergency management as a foundational document for the county's emergency management program. We commend the Tipton County Emergency Management Agency and the other plan participants for the development of a solid, workable plan that will guide the actions of preparing for, responding to, and recovering from emergencies and disasters. These plans are approved on a five-year basis, effective October one, twenty-eleven, based on the current code. The next update for Tipton County's plan would be mailed later than September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, signed Patrick T., Director of the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency. So the plans are approved, and that's all we get a fitting and proper, conceding all the issues that we've had in Houston, Texas, and in Florida, and in those surrounding states, so it's good to have the plan, but I'd like to ask the commission to put this, spread this on the minutes of the commission, if you would.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is by Commissioner Fuzzell, seconded by Commissioner Smith, that this letter be approved and spread on the minutes of this county commission meeting. Do we have any questions? If not, all in favor of adopting the motion, let the numbers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Also got this letter from the Control of the Treasury. Dear County Executive and Tipton County Commissioners, we'd like to congratulate you and many elected officials and employees of Tipton County for receiving a clean audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, and clean audits are strong indicators of your commitment to establishing strong internal controls and accountability for taxpayer dollars. It is evident that Tipton County is doing its part to ensure good governance in the state of Tennessee. Tipton County was one of only twelve Tennessee counties alerted about the control of the office that received a clean report in fiscal twenty sixteen. This represents the highest number of clean audit reports since the state's history. In twenty fifteen, the Tennessee General Assembly passed Public Chapter one one two, requiring all local governments to establish, maintain internal controls to safeguard county funds and property. We believe this policy decision is having significant impact on improving audits across Tennessee. We hope you'll proudly display this frame certificate, recognizing your county's certificate accomplishment, and they came to draw us a nice frame certificate. Signed, Justin P. Wilson, Control of the Treasurers Jim R. N., Director of Local Government Audit. I'd like the commission, if you spread this on the minutes of this meeting as well.
So moved. Second.
Motion is by Commissioner Ringel, seconded by Commissioner Mason, that this letter be spread on the minutes of Tipton County Commission D. in September twenty seventeen. Is there any discussion on... Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, let the number say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. So. I... I wanted to report to you, Commissioners, I've kind of run some analysis, and then just to give you an idea of... uh, the kind of money that we've talked about in these budgets, and this is for the... the sixteen-seventeen tax collection year. If you just look at the state share taxes, which you don't have to see a lot, but a amount of a lot of money, uh, state share taxes in the twenty-sixteen-seventeen year in Tipton County amounted to three billion, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars. Now, that's a good bit of money. Of that three point seven million, two point one was gas and motor fuel tax. Uh, that went to the public works department for roads and, and bridges. Uh, the other... the second largest portion was eight hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, this known as the PVA replacement tax. It's the money that the taxpayers at PVA makes because they don't pay property taxes. They pay in lieu of property tax. And that's eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars annually to us. It's also a state share tax. Then the third largest item is the business tax. The business tax in the sixteen-seventeen year came in at four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars for Tipton County's share. And so, the state share taxes that come in, uh, particularly in the general fund, is three point seven seven two million. Uh, that's a big help to us in Tennessee. And quite frankly, in a lot of states, uh, local governments don't share in these kind of taxes like Tennessee does. Uh, the other section I wanted to mention to you was the, the Education Department. If we look at state funding and federal funding for education in Tipton County, uh, the amount of money that comes through the basic education program in the sixteen-seventeen year was sixty-one point five million dollars through the basic education program. There's another nine million, seven hundred and six thousand dollars that's federal money that goes to the education system. A lot of that's a central cafeteria in some of these other federal programs. For total expenditure in sixteen-seventeen years, state and federal funds in education, seventy-one million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. In addition to that seventy-one point two million dollars, another million, thirty-one thousand, three hundred dollars came, uh, through us, uh, to us through the state, uh, program for pre-Kindergarten. Pre-K was a little over a million dollars, a million thirty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. And so, these state share taxes are pretty significant amount of revenue, particularly to the board of education, but that, I wanted to give you some perspective, uh, on that. Uh, also, would report to you Commissioners that the REDI program, the Regional Economic Development Initiative that's run by the Southwest Tennessee Development District, we've got a scholarship program that you all fund. We use Unilever, Paying the Little Tax Dollars. We've been doing this several years now. We've got the most students signed up we've ever had in that program. It looks like there are eighty-eight REDI students that received the REDI scholarship for the fall of twenty-seventeen. Eighty-eight of REDI students. Uh, we also have, and this is a significant difference this year, if you look at dual enrollment, dual enrollment coming out of our high schools this fall, dual enrollment is up sixty percent. Sixty percent, dual enrollment is up. Uh, Covington High School, and we talked about Covington High School, there weren't students that were going to the TCAT yet. Covington High, sixteen students going to TCAT this fall. So, the dual enrollment that we've emphasized, and, you know, we're working with this seven hundred thousand dollars as part of one point six million to build the building at the College of Flight Technology. We're seeing a significant interest in dual enrollment. When you got a sixty percent increase, that's, that's, that's pretty good, so... Congratulations on the folks who worked on that, and thank you all again for providing the dollars for we get this TCAT, uh, building program start. And then the last bit of information I wanted to give you was concerning the program that you don't hear a lot about, and Tim Sloan and Thurston Sloan ran this program for several years, and then Swire Sloan passed away a while back. Robin Seedy, our Workforce Development Coordinator, she's helping with that program now, and she and Mr. Thurston Sloan are doing international dealing. But the Books for Birth, uh, Foundation, that's the program where every child is from birth to, I believe, age five, gets a book every month if you sign them up for it. It doesn't cost them anything. Uh, the Books for Birth program has been a highly successful program. Last year, over thirty-three thousand books were distributed to children in Tipton County through the work of, uh, uh, through this... it's actually a Dolly Parton initiative. Uh, but Books from Birth Foundation, thirty-three thousand books, uh, that's the first to them getting out of books that are going to kids in Tipton County, uh, between the age of birth and, and five years old. So, thank you for the support of, of that as, as well. I believe that's all the information and all the announcements I have. I do know that Chief John Piercy is here, and Chief Piercy's, uh... he's the skinniest person in the county that I've heard, I'll tell you that. Uh, but, but he's here, he wanted to say a few words, I think, to you guys, so Chief Piercy, you're recognized. You'll come forward.
How do I follow that entrance?
You tell me, you can take the hint and speak, you boil it down to an hour and a half, I don't want to do.
Ask for thirty seconds, I'll take thirty seconds. Oh, I just wanted to personally thank all the Commissioners and Mayor Huffman for allowing me to become a employee of Tipton County. It's changed my family's outlook, uh, for our future, for things that we were planning on doing. This is actually a blessing in disguise. I've been there for two weeks. Uh, today was the first day I had to buy my own lunch. So if anybody at the courthouse come by, or go somewhere, something. They put me in the courthouse, uh, some call it the basement. I call it a lovely, uh, room. My wife has actually come and dressed it up and made it look very presentable.
He's in the bowels of the courthouse.
Actually, another reason I wanted to come tonight, uh... Pretty much, this is your fire department that I'm creating. Basically, to me, it's a train, and I'm the engineer driving it forward. And by doing this, I definitely, um... if anybody's seen my wife, I learned a long time ago, you don't try to size people. So, I actually met Jeff, one of the first shirts made, Tipton County Fire. Jeff Booth. Name Jeff Booth.
Is that the athletic cut?
That the girl's side. Director Bailey. And the reason I say this is because y'all are getting the first ever Tipton County Fire shirts.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm down the same path and the same theory on county Commissioners.
Athletic cut.
I got the smallest... that's how it works in my house, I get the smallest thing possible so that I don't get a problem.
You getting gavel ball, man? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
I want y'all to be proud of what y'all done. I obviously never expected y'all to wear these, but more of a memento of something that you're... Nobody else in the Tipton County had.
Thank you, Chief.
And only that I have. Can't forget my boys friends. That's all, I thank you all.
Thank you. Alright, do we have anyone have anything further? If not, do the chair will maintain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Is there a second? Without objection, you stand adjourned.
Technology was supposed to make our lives easier. No one told us about the plethora of glitches, viruses, hackers, hundreds of passwords to remember, and getting all our tech to sync up. Introducing Tech Home, technology made easy for you and your devices. Tech Home makes it easy to set up, protect, and enjoy your internet-connected devices anytime, anywhere. Security, password management, backup, and premium tech support. Get back in charge of your digital life now with Tech Home.